Is there?
Yes, good. Good morning, everyone. This is Knox County Commissioners, November twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. We will be going through some resolutions here at the beginning. And then have Scott Boone join us with the Job and Family Services and then our dog shelter. So we're gonna do a couple of results. You can come on in. Yeah, Scott. We're gonna do four resolutions. That was out of the way. And so.
All right, Jason.
Yeah, so we've proven advertising in the Mount River News request for qualifications for the twenty twenty-six and twenty-eight administrative services for the C D B G grant. This is required to be done every three years. And C D C of Ohio has been our consultant, but we're required to do uh this process every three years and it's time to do that again. And Penny's taking care of sending it out to the list of companies in the state that do this type of work.
Which is still hands full to do that. Yes.
So I'm saying wish.
Second.
And those in favor say aye. And then we have approve a request for qualifications for the administrative services, community block grants. So this kind of goes in line with the advertising.
A motion.
Motion.
My second.
Those in favor say aye.
Hi.
And then we have for your consideration to approve a petition for annexation expedited expedited type one of one point eight four four acres uh from Wayne Township to the village of Frederick Town.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
And then we have a utility permit for Knox Energy Co-op Monroe Mills Road in Howard Township.
Motion to approve.
And those in favor say aye.
And then if you'll go ahead and sign the minutes and the bills, we'll have all that stuff.
Okay, good. Scott, thank you for being here with us.
Thank you for having me as always.
Yeah. So it's all yours. You can impress it with all this information. So people will be in great holiday spirits for Thanksgiving.
Well, I hope they're not relying just on me for their holiday joy, but we we did receive some some good news at the Job and Family Services in terms of the supplemental nutrition assistance program, the food stamps, as they're traditionally known as. You probably were um those were approved uh through uh the end of September of twenty-six. Um, there was partial payment issued to recipients in November. I want to say about sixty-five percent of their entire allotments. That will now be made full. We're told by the state it'll be this week. We're not certain in terms of um how that gets scheduled or what the formula is. We're just being advised that that remaining thirty-five percent um will be paid out to families this week. We're not entirely sure um if the counties will absorb that or uh so it will come from another funding stream, but we're uh awaiting clarification and I'm hoping maybe I'll get some more answers at tomorrow's legislative meeting.
So that's awesome. Yeah, that comes over by you. How much is that?
I don't know the amount, Jason, but it's uh it's not it's not ideal, obviously. I mean, we will be able to to make it work, but you know, we I I like to plan ahead so far and um with everything being so uncertain, we hadn't got to the point where we were having real conversations about layoffs and early retirements and those different types of things, but had we not gotten the news that things were going to be, uh you know, that the shutdown was ending and and everything that that meant. We were um we were approaching having those discussions. So while we're glad that uh SNAP benefits are are through September, that the temporary assistance for needy families, cash benefits for families, that's only through through I believe January twenty-six. So we and that's where our reimbursements come from and that's where if those don't continue on, um we might be having some uncomfortable conversations, but we didn't lay anybody off. We we didn't do any early retirements. We've had some traditional retirements. Um, we've had some some other separations, um one through probation and and another um that was a voluntary resignation. Um, but as I've talked about before, you know, we're always doing our due diligence when turnover occurs. When ten years ago, I think we had maybe ninety-three employees and um with the recent retirements and and those departures, we'll probably have under seventy full-time positions. So the work isn't any easier. In fact, it's quite a bit harder, but we feel like we're uh being responsible stewards within our budget and within our position descriptions, continuing to reshape those so that people are working um as productively as possible and that as a leadership team, we're providing them the support um that they need to get their jobs done. It it it's not simpler than it was ten years ago. I think we're just handling and attacking it more responsibly. So we're very proud of that. Um, but yeah, we we've been uh we've been a little bit nervous over the past month and a half or so, uh but it seems like we're coming out of that. And um the most important part to us was that, you know, with being the holiday season, we didn't want any families to go without um. Unfortunately, uh Governor Dewine had put, I think, twenty-five million dollars toward the food pantries and we've been very active on our social media outlets and our website about where families can go to get other uh options for nutrition and food assistance and those different types of things. And we'll we'll continue to broadcast that out. Um, this Carla uh for sorry for the intrusion, but um in Knox County specifically, because I thought maybe one of you would be interested in the latest. It's um SNAP benefits. It's currently two thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight families that received those benefits and um that's five thousand two hundred and ninety-nine individuals. T N F is a hundred and twelve families. Again, T N F is the cash.
How many?
Hundred and twelve families for T N F. Two hundred individuals for T N F.
So that fifty-two hundred something include children, families.
That's all. Yeah, it's the twenty-seven eighty-eight families and within that five thousand two hundred and ninety-nine children, parents, caregivers uh for the SNAP. So that's that's what we look like Knox County. I think statewide, it's uh one point four million recipients in in state fiscal year twenty twenty-four. The those benefits put roughly three billion dollars into Ohio's economy. So it's not just families being without their benefits. It's, you know, it's uh grocery stores and and those different types of places that in part rely on that business to to keep them whole as well. So um good outcome, uh anxious weeks, but um we feel better now about um where we're headed and 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 those decision makers that are putting aside maybe some of those differences and making the right decisions uh by our families. Generally speaking, uh we're we're down uh four workers in in public assistance. Um, we're still within that top three, top five in terms of performance outcomes. We are considering uh the the state has has had some discussions, not just with Knox, but other counties about you're aware that the C eight uh collaboration we're involved with uh with the call center. And um we're we're happy that we've provided a lot of assistance to other counties in terms of their applications and redeterminations over the years and and still upholding ours. And then we've received some support from other counties as well. Um, we we are considering uh some with the state's encouragement, keeping that connection to collaborate, but perhaps advocating for only managing Knox County calls and and applications. So that's a a developing uh process that we're exploring. Um, other counties have gone that route. Um, the the reason you you keep the association with whatever group you're in is that that entitles you to the state benefits in terms of equipment and and that type of financial support. Um, Licking County is is pulled out. There's there's a number of others that have done so as well within their respective organizations. And so Carla's gonna be meeting with uh with licking next week or the week after and and doing some more discovery about that. So I'll keep you posted, obviously, but it's something that that we're thinking about. Bottom line is, you know, true to our mission, you know, what's best for Knox County families, and we want to make sure that they're getting the best available assistance uh that we can provide. The audit system now through the state is is much more complex and complicated, and we want to make sure that we're not relying on other counties that might make a mistake or not provide us with information on something that's going on with a case that needs attention. We'll know that firsthand if we're paying attention to our own our own work. So um anyway, that's just something that that we're we're talking about and it's in the infancy stages, but always proud of of the public assistance staff and the way they manage adversity and and seemingly constant changes and and I have confidence that they'll they'll continue to do that um on a regular basis.
Could I back you up a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay, SNAP, TANF, you want to tell us, explain, share those initials again for those who are watching and?
TANF is Temporary Assistance for Needy Families, traditionally was considered cash benefits and SNAP, supplemental nutrition assistance program is what was commonly referred to as food stamps.
Yeah, thank you.
You're gonna throw me for a loop one of these days, because you know how many acronyms I have to. But but yeah, I understand it's important for for others to know, you know, because you you throw these things at them and what does that mean? And I already have all these others. I have to keep track of as well, so. I I do appreciate the the clarification, but um children's services, uh we're still steady at below sixty in terms of kids and custody. But as I talked about, the the those ten fifteen kids that are in the more restrictive settings are still eating up a lot of our placement costs and and we're hemorrhaging a bit um still in that. And and you know, I've been talking to Jason about how do we plan on um beyond your assistance that you've been providing year after year to make us whole in that category. And how do we uh at some point become independent of that? Because it's not a long-term sustainable plan for the commissioners to be funding us a million dollar plus a year for that cost that uh even though we bought the kids in care down, um the expenses keep keep rising. So we're um we're proud of the the number of kids that we're able to reunify and and reach adoption permanency and or be placed with relatives. Those are those are all things that we're um we're still working on on a on a daily basis. Um, we've got a couple of vacancies in social services. The the two departing retiree or retirees will be absorbing their responsibilities into other positions. We also had a family aide that recently uh submitted her resignation, so um we'll probably post for that. That's a part-time position, but we we always need help with transportation and um and visitation supervision, which is a lot of what that position entails. And child support is uh uh status quo is as well. Um, not a lot of changes there. I'm still uh happy with our partnership Sheriff's Office and the C Quir program and and those different types of relationships that we have. Um, workforce Brandy, the administrator there is still um worried about potential changes. You know, are the Ohio Means Job Centers going to be around in twenty-seven? Um, we think that we're comfortable with the way that we look and whether we're structured for the next year, but beyond that, not a lot of answers. So we continue to to serve families with uh in that regard with what we have. And um but she's also looking into doing some some other programming, the some of the feedback that we get from the Career Center and some schools. Um, there's a demand for pre-apprenticeship programs. So Brandy's been, she's developed a a group to talk about that with some various uh educational leaders. And we were going to focus on welding, because that seems to be a a much needed uh vocation. Um, but it wasn't, it's not going to be cost effective. We we would have to find a space to to do that at the Career Center. They they have that now, but it's full, but there's still demand beyond, uh I think the twelve fifteen enrollees, but whatever they have. Um, but so we looked into like a mobile welding uh place and um that was going to be six hundred thousand dollars. And obviously, that's, you know, that's not something that we are, even if we partnered with somebody, we'd be able to to engage in. So we're looking more towards um something in manufacturing and or healthcare. So that's being built now, and hopefully I'll have some some new and better news um when I come back next month. Um, but other than that, it's always appreciate your your support and your help towards helping family services.
Scott, I didn't look at any electrical stuff with that apprentice program. The reason I say that is Bill and I went last year up to Fairfield County
Hmm.
uh to and and their clear first tour. We toured a facility that was similar to that where they were doing certain types of programs and they they had where basically they had a house built within a you know, where they were pre having her kind of pre-fabricated part of the house.
Yeah.
And then they had the students wiring it, doing HVAC work on it and all that kind of stuff. Then, of course, they disseminate when the next group comes, but it was that kind of a program where they were working them through those. And then they had um qualified licensed electricians and HVAC technicians were the ones that were doing the
Right.
classes.
I I think Fairfield's different than we are, because our our funding, as you know, is limited. Um, but I I think they're in a partnership with their commissioners where the commissioners fund they own considerably.
Okay.
Um, we're we're obviously in a different situation. Um, but you know, we're we're always looking to um find other uh funding sources. The the standalone six hundred thousand per a mobile welding station, that's and and we didn't find that worth anybody's time to approve, but there's other things that we think that we can do for our community um that that are similar, but we don't know on anything like that. Like they've gotten Fairfield. It's impressive, but you know, it's not not what meets our community needs right now. So.
And apprenticeships also. So like the Career Center, once they do some basic training, can send them to actual businesses to apprentice?
That that's the idea. You know, it what what would be great is, you know, if they if they could uh get that training at you know, with that with our programming, the Career Center, and then just go to the employer later that day. And and start getting some of that that additional experience. That's sort of what we're looking at in terms of um the structure of it all.
How much space were they anticipating they would need for some of these from this base perspective?
Well, we had um, you know, th- these were some very initial conversations. We were talking about going out to maybe Hartland and seeing if they had anything out there, but um, you know, once once we landed on welding, wasn't going to be a direction, we pivoted out of that. So I don't I don't think there was any more talk about space or how big or where any of that. That was just, you know, one of the initial locations that they they talked about, so. Um.
To do that, what would be your funding source to be bring in inspectors?
It'd be the Greater Ohio Workforce Board, more or less. You know, we'd be dependent on um state and local funding.
Because I know that the um um the Career Center has also their adult ed.
Right.
And I believe that the uh instructor for that works for Columbia Gas out there, bang.
Yeah.
And so I didn't know what, did you plug that? Or I even asked about the adult ed portion out there, because I assumed there would be funding for that.
Probably. Uh, I don't know if Brandy's explored that or not. Um, you know, I'll talk to her about it, obviously. Um, and you know, again, we're not looking to take programming away from anybody. We're just we're just willing, we're trying to complement what's already there
Exactly.
uh and build on, you know, some of the people that might uh not have the opportunity, because the spaces are full through no one's fault if anyone.
Did you?
When you mentioned like it going away up Knox in twenty-seven, is that through federal funding, state funding, combination of both?
Combination. I mean, I I I don't know that that's where it's headed, Jason, but that but that's, you know, a consideration that we have to think about. Um, you know, I I've tried to be a little more optimistic than some. Um, but but I also sometimes see, you know, this this happens here and and you you're part of this discussion. And it's like, well, wait a second, what? What does that mean? Um, so you just try to prepare for all angles. I I think, you know, the Ohio Means Job Centers add uh you know, a great deal of value to especially our community.
Well, that seems like a area you you set as a cost saving, but it's going to cost a lot more money.
Right.
Because we're keeping unemployment rates down, at least in our community. We're doing that and the benefits of the work they're doing out there to provide.
Right. So it's you you're almost penalized because you're doing your job.
Good job. We don't need it. And then you're
Right.
how much you're needed.
Yeah, and you know, the we're still doing the things like we just haven't had an individual get their G E D and and you know, those there's so many different programs out there. It's it's difficult to keep track of, but right now we're, you know, we're sort of focused on big picture things, because the the Great Ohio Workforce Board's uh uh executive director recently, as I think I said last, John Treibin has retired. And they have an interim. Now they're doing a search for his replacement. So when we go to to go be for these asks financially, you know, we're confident that we'll get a lot of the things that we need, but the uncertainty with the leadership in in the direction that things are headed, we just we're careful about what we count on and and what we maybe need to find somewhere else.
Good.
So um, that's that's a little bit of our world. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Have a great holiday.
Thank you.
You too.
Um, and as always, thank you um for all that you do to support us and in the community.
It's done. Very good.
Is Brian out there?
Hi.
I haven't seen him come in.
Not yet. Yeah.
Well, he is.
No.
All right.
I'm gonna catch you.
Good morning, once again.
Good morning.
Good to see you guys.
Doesn't seem like that long ago, does it?
So so now we have Brian Bigger Sack from the Dog Warding with us. Uh, so he's making this regular visit twice a week. Brian, thank you for being here.
I do proud of me. The the monthly report for the dog shelter for October two thousand twenty-five, we had a total of fifty-one dogs enter the shelter. Twenty-two of those were owner surrenders, twenty-six were strays, and three were seized slash custody dogs. And we had a total of forty-six leave the shelter. Nineteen of those were adoptions. Eight were euthanases, uh seventeen were returned to their owners, and two were transferred to rescues. Um, it should be noted that seven of the eight dogs euthanized in October at the shelter were at the request of their owners due to the dogs being aggressive, having a bite history or for medical reasons. And then one of the dogs that was euthanized by the shelter after a volunteer was bitten.
True.
And as of Wednesday, November twentieth, there are eighteen dogs at the shelter. Uh seventeen are available for adoption and one is adopted and waiting to be picked up by its owner. Um, there's a total of four dogs at the shelter that have been at the shelter for over sixty days. And uh there were a total of fifty citations that were issued in the month of October. Um, Deputy Tyler Moore issued one citation for failure to comply, eight citations for failure to license, uh one citation for failure to register a dangerous dog, and uh twenty-eight citations for animal neglect and two citations for animal cruelty.
Too many.
Um, Deputy Brian Weiser issued five citations for failure to control and um issued three citations for failure to control and two citations for failure to license.
Does animal neglect, what was?
So, yeah, so uh fourteen, yeah, fourteen of those were uh it was for two individuals that lived together, so fourteen for the husband, fourteen for the spouse.
There are fourteen dogs now?
No, it was um three cats and four dogs. So, yes.
So are they still in possession of the animal?
No, they they surrendered them to the shelter.
Okay.
And we're in the process of rehoming them.
So did you take the cat over to the the cat facility then or?
Yes, so one of those three cats was deceased, but two two of the cats were given to the Humane Society, which they they accepted, so.
Yeah.
Right. They've been out to cutting those trees down. I told you about there on in the back behind the tree, by the trail.
Um, not that not that I've noticed.
They're doing some clearing, one of the the utilities and oh, they had contact and we could clear that out. Brian's been wanting that cleared out anyway back there, so we told them to go ahead and have at it.
That's pretty great.
Yeah, they cleared a lot of um brush behind the building, but they haven't done the trees yet. And I think we're hoping that once they cleared all that out, we'd be able to plant some newer trees to get some more healthy growth back there.
Yeah, so. So with the holidays uh upon us now with Thanksgiving, Yep. does there an uptick on um to people that wanting dogs during this time or abusing dogs this time?
Um, I don't know that necessarily abusing dogs, and I think that maybe sometimes around the holidays when people are home, maybe there's an uptake in dogs that are adopted possibly. It's I don't know that there's a a giant pattern that we see of more adoptions during certain times, so it just kind of flows, heaven flows.
So you have seventeen dogs that would be looking for homes.
Yeah, Thanksgiving. Some good-looking dogs that definitely love to spend the holidays in a in a home and not at the shelter.
Did you ever get your second dog there?
Well.
We're up to my we have those seventeen. Probably all, everything, to be honest.
It's like we should never eat them dogs.
Probably.
Brian, since uh you've been in voice this week, I assume you're not coming back to see us. So if you want to get like a little update on it's dog tag season, so you want to kind of let people know. Yep, starting December first, you'll be able to purchase dog licenses uh for the following year, two thousand twenty-six. Um, you'll be able to do that through January thirty-first without there being any type of late fee. Um, twenty dollars for one-year tag, sixty dollars for a three-year tag, and two hundred dollars for a lifetime tag.
Can they do that online if it's?
So starting, yes, starting um starting January or December first, they will be able to do that online.
Okay.
Or they can come into our office or go to the auditor's office here in the building.
So if they do it online, credit card only?
Yes, um, I think that, yeah, if you do it online, it's credit card only. And I know there is a service fee to do it online.
Okay.
And that service fee goes to the vendor, not for the county.
Yeah, right. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good to know.
Yeah. And then we uh we recently set up an account, so if people want to make donations
Yep.
for your program, how they they are not doing that.
Yep, so the the new fund, the Knox County uh animal uh the Knox County Animal Care Fund, um they can do that online. They can do that coming into the shelter. They can pay with check, cash, or credit card. Um, we'll be sending out flyers with all of our renewal period um renewals for the dog licenses, and that will have all the information with the Q R code that they can take a picture of that takes them to do that as well with some information about the fund.
And that's only be used for care, so that's
Yeah, it's only for that.
Animal care, no expenses.
Those kind of.
Yeah. So you said you'd be sending out a flyer. So you have a physical address for those who do um get their licenses. Do you get their emails as well, so you can email that out?
Yeah, so it just it just depends um if when you fill out for your license, if you want to put your email on there. So I believe that they do get, you do get an email.
In lieu of uh a hard copy.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the auditor and emails out to accounts that don't have an email. I'm not sure if they send those out just to the accounts. I I'm not sure about that.
Okay, and then the people who want to come and look at the dogs, your address for the the those dogs is?
Yep, we're at two eight five Columbus Road in town.
Yeah.
So we're open from ten AM to four PM, Monday through Saturday.
And they can come out, bring a dog leash, get the dog, go to the bike trail, which is right beside. And they can come out, bring a dog leash, get the dog, go to the bike trail, which is right beside the event, and be able to do it at all.
They don't even need to bring a leash or a collar. We can provide that. We can provide that. We get lots of donations, so we can definitely. Get them taken care of.
Then you guys will be closed Friday.
So we'll be closed on.
The day after Thanksgiving.
On Thanksgiving and the day after.
But then will you be open Saturday?
We'll be open Saturday then, again.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
It's time to go Thanksgiving. Thank you, too. Okay, so as we prepare for next week, we know Tuesday is just a bills-only session. Um, so we won't be on online next week at all because of that, so. Uh, we know that everyone will enjoy their Thanksgiving, because they won't have to tune in to us on that Thursday. Um, things you wanted to share here?
No, I'm I'm good, thank you.
I just was at the Visitors and Convention Bureau last night and a lot of great things coming on for the twenty two and fiftieth celebration.
Are you allowed to share any of that or we just have to wait?
I think we're gonna be doing, uh, all across Ohio is gonna be showing movies. It's gonna be after movies and uh. We're gonna have one here at Ariel Park, so and it'll be featuring someone special from our community that's been an actor, so I'll give you that much of it.
So it's not me or you, Bill.
Sorry, guys, no, no Shakespeare for you.
Yeah, and Cheryl, you wanna say anything about Byron Saunders uh? So you're what you guys are doing next week for your, just so people in the community will know about Byron Saunders.
Well, we actually had our main distribution last weekend. We've got a few more coming up this weekend, but so far we've done about five hundred and ten. Family Thanksgiving meal boxes. Um, we've got about sixteen to twenty to do this weekend, so. True, yeah, our goal was six hundred, a little bit shy of that, but. Still, a lot of, a lot of.
Being shy is a good thing, because that means now as many people need it, right?
True.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Then Jason, you have anything you need to update us?
No, we just need to, we did receive this, then he gave me another one of those liquor permits just from Danette's telling repair Frederick Town Marathon. Yeah, so just, that's all it is that. And we have to just acknowledge that we received that, and no, I don't have anything else, that's for.
Take the motion for adjournment?
I'll motion for adjournment.
Second.
And everyone have a great Thanksgiving.